Testing one, two, three. This will be the March 19th, 2014 special meeting, followed by the workshop meeting, followed by the regular council meeting.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order a special meeting in the City Council's Satellite Beach, March 19th, 2014, approximately 6:45. The action item is to discuss take action on a grant submission for the west side of Highway A-1A recreational trail Phase One. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. The, unfortunately, at the, well, at the last council meeting, we had received authors, not council meeting, the last community redevelopment agency meeting, we received authorization to move forward with a recreational trails grant. Since then, and actually it was the next day, we were notified that we were not eligible for that grant funding source because it was on a right-of-way. I checked into that grant myself when our volunteer grant writer brought it forward to us, and there's literally not one mention of it not being allowed on a right-of-way throughout any of the grant materials, but that is one of the rules, so we need to withdraw that request.
Okay. Questions from council?
Just, yes, just one minute. Down the road, if they repay A-1A, can we approach them about it at that time? Is that the way to go? That's what I was figuring.
Yes, and that's, yeah, yeah. So, they're, they're gonna put sidewalks, they're actually required by law to put sidewalks and bike lanes in where they can fit them.
Okay.
So, if there's a right-of-way, they will put 'em in.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the city take no action on the agreement or on the grant from the state and federal recreational trails program.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Goff, second by Councilman Montanaro. At this time, I'll open up for public, for public comment, excuse me. Here are none, bring it back to council. Any further discussion from council? Here are none. Lenora?
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dean?
I went abstaining since I wasn't here for the agenda, or not vote, or whatever.
Um, I don't think you can.
Well, then you're gonna have to give me a summary of what happened.
Okay, Courtney, would you like to?
Sure, I can do it again. At the last community redevelopment agency, we received a grant authorization to move forward with the trails, recreational trails grant program. The next day, we received notification from the DEP representative that we were not eligible because it was a road right-of-way. And I was telling council that I had looked into the grant application myself prior to us submitting this to City Council, and after our grant volunteer brought that forward to us, that opportunity, and literally in none of the application materials did it say you couldn't use it on a right-of-way. But that is one of the rules. We checked back a couple times to make sure, and so we would have to withdraw our request.
And so, the motion is no action.
Okay.
So, Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Senator Goff?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. This time, close the special meeting. Any further discussion on this item? Here are none, close the meeting. At this time, I'd like to convene a special workshop, workshop meeting in the City Council's Satellite Beach, March 19th, 2014, approximately 6:50 PM, to interview the board applicant. It's time, Bill Maher? You're ready, you're on.
I'll lie myself.
First, Bill, thank you very much. You're always there to help, and appreciate you stepping forward here. Who would like to start?
I don't have any questions for you, Bill. I know your background, and I know your CPA and accounting background, and so I know that you're very well qualified to serve on this, and I appreciate your stepping forward to help us out with this.
I just had, I made a comment earlier that the council used to do this, and evidently the state has come down and said that there has to be, there's a procedure in place for this, and that's why we have to have this committee. Fine.
I don't have any questions for Bill, other than, I just, I know Bill has devoted a lot of time to our city as a past councilperson and on different boards, so, Bill, thank you very much for stepping up again.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to say, Bill, is kind of follow Dominic's comments, you know, I've known you for a long, long time, you've always been a big supporter of the city and worked to make it the place it is today, so, thanks for stepping up again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ditto. Thank you for your time and your service to the city.
Thank you.
Bill, thank you. I know you'll be a great help to the board here with your background, and appreciate you very much. Any questions for us on it?
The, is, there's a regulation, obviously, that says what this committee has to consist of, how many members?
Yes, and there's a timeline also.
Okay. Lenora told me there's a timeline.
We, we will be emailing you a lot of information and trying to contact you all, the three board members that will be appointed, or have been appointed, later this week, and try to schedule organizational meeting for you. We're not expecting this to take any longer than three or four meetings, so.
Okay.
You can go real fast.
And, and they're still going with afternoon meetings, you said?
Yes, if that works out for everyone.
Except Friday.
No Fridays, that would do, no.
Any further questions? Bill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. At this time, any further business on application interviews? Here are none. Meeting is closed, and we'll wait for our council meeting, that's. Courtney? Good evening, welcome. Like to call to order a regular meeting in the City Council, Satellite Beach, March 19th, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM. Will you please join Councilman Breimer for a moment of silence and a pledge?
Should everybody please stand and have a moment of silence, please? Do you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to everybody who serves this land, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three, Citizens' Comments. This is for comments from citizens first and non-citizens residents on non-agenda items. The floor is open. Steve?
Steve Hedley, resident. I believe it's back on February the 5th, there was a meeting in which Mr. Sherman, the CRA attorney, was tasked or asked or said he would get back to the city on whether the Attorney General would look back at decisions as opposed to going forward at decisions. And normally, I would write an email about this, but this tasking was done out in the open by the City Council, and I'm wondering if we've heard anything in the, in the month and a half.
Thank you.
It was my understanding that he answered the question at the meeting.
Okay.
I'll be glad to ask him to put in an email and send it out to you, but he, he answered the question at the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Public comments? Still open. Here are no further public comments, I'll close the public comments section. Moving on to Agenda Item Four, City Council Comments. Who would like to start?
I have no comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Last night, had the opportunity to attend the Brevard County Golden Eagle Dinner for the 2014 Boy Scouts with our city manager, Courtney. Well-attended, we had over 400 people throughout the county attend this meeting, and I think they raised, what was it, Courtney, 196,000?
Yeah.
They're a great job as a fundraiser, really nice to be there on behalf of the city. Last week, also attended the Department of Health Injury Prevention Meeting in Tampa as part of the Department of Health's Initiative to Prevent Falls Statewide. Had a good attendance with that, a number of good speakers, and we're slowly making a difference on fall prevention for our elders throughout the, throughout the state. Also attended the Brevard Commission on Aging Meeting on 3/13. What came out of that council was that in April, they have asked us if we would do a presentation to the Space Coast League of Cities on the topic of CFAL, just kind of reintroduce the topic at the, at the Board of Directors meeting, and then under public comment at the, at the regular meeting. The Department of Elder Affairs also was gonna send a representative to this, but since it's just under public comments, they kind of deferred to us to go ahead and do the presentation. A full presentation will be available by the Department of Elder Affairs, probably at the end of the year, once a spot opens up in the Space Coast League of Cities. So, I guess my main question is, is there, all right, if I go ahead and attend the board meeting and do the presentation, just to kind of bring CFAL back up and move forward with that? Okay. Is that all right? All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Last week, the city manager, at my request, arranged briefings from each of our department heads to bring me up to speed on some of the things that I've been missing out on of late, and the, the meetings were very informative, and I very much appreciate the effort that the department heads took to let me know what's going on in their departments. One of the things that I noted, and that I think is certainly worth mentioning, is the high level of morale in each of our departments now, employee morale, and it's a wonderful thing to see. It's what we're used to here in Satellite Beach, and it's really great to see it come back. I attended the Space Coast League of Cities Dinner Meeting last week also, and I don't recognize that organization anymore. When I was active in it, when I was on council back in the 90s, that was a very active organization, working diligently to promote issues that were of importance to local governments, and specifically to those here in Brevard. Since that time, I think that the, the local league has lost its focus, and it was disheartening to me to see that the majority of the attendees at that dinner meeting were not even elected officials. They were business interests and other organizations, and they even welcomed the newest associate member who is a home builder. And I'm not really sure what that connection is with our municipal issues, but if that organization is going to, to have any meaning at all, it really needs to right the course and get back and start focusing on municipalities. I dropped in at the employees' luncheon, and the Employee of the Year was, what is his rank now? Commander? Commander, I apologize. Commander Brad Hodge is their Employee of the Year, and the Volunteer of the Year was...
Salvatore Lorcelli? Lorcelli?
Say it, say it in here.
I have a hard time with his last name. Salvatore Lorcelli. Sorry, that's the part-time. And then the Volunteer of the Year Award was Cynthia Singedong.
So, congratulations to all of them. I know that they worked hard to get that recognition. I stopped by the Satellite Beach Women's Club Open House, which was in honor of their 50th anniversary, and I can't think of any organization that has done more to help this city than the Satellite Beach Women's Club. And they had a really nice display showing all of the things that they have been involved with, not only for the city, but for various civic interests throughout Brevard County. And I spoke with the president of the Women's Club and told her that I would like to feature the Women's Club in an article in our next issue of the Beachcaster, to remind our residents of what this organization has done, and to try to generate some interest. They are having problems, as I understand, a lot of civic organizations are, in recruiting young people to join their ranks, and so I think that we, at the very least, owe them some publicity to help them get the word out, because they have a wonderful mission, and, and we wouldn't be the, the city that we are now without them. Today, I substituted, I've been very busy. I'm back at it now. Today, I substituted for the mayor at a function called Mayor's for Meals, and that is sponsored by Aging Matters in Brevard, and once a year, they do a promotional event where mayors or other elected officials from the various municipalities here in Brevard help to deliver meals to the folks who are involved in that program. So, it was a nice opportunity to get out and talk to some residents, and I didn't embarrass you, so. So, it was a different opportunity, and it was very nice. And then the last thing I have is, Councilwoman Dean, I haven't seen the anonymous letter to J-LAC yet that you were going to provide for us. When are we going to be getting that?
I'm working on the public records request.
Okay, I requested that on the 5th of February, so. Okay, I'm gonna keep asking, I'm not going away, I wanna see that letter. This council needs to see that letter. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
I also attended the Satellite Beach Women's Club event on Saturday, and, you know, as Lorraine said, you know, they had a table that was just full of scrapbooks that the Women's Club, of different things they've done going back to the 60s, and I think it was probably before Florida Today was here, because a lot of the newspaper articles were actually from the Orlando Sentinel. They've done a lot of great things for our city over the years, and I applaud Lorraine for bringing up writing the article, because I think it does need to go out there, people need to be aware of what they do, you know, civic organizations are, are needing people these days, and that's definitely a worthwhile cause for people that might want to be interested in joining it. And I was busy last week, too. I spent three days up in Tallahassee. I went up there with the Florida Swimming Pool Association, I was a swimming pool contractor, but I changed hats while I'm up there, and I wear my city hat. I had meetings with Senator Gardner, who's, actually represents Orlando, part of Seminole County, and also touches the top part of Brevard County, so he is part of the Brevard delegation. He will be the incoming Senate President next year. I also had a meeting with staff assistant for Speaker designate Chris Foley, and went over some of the issues with him that are important to the cities. I also sit on an advocacy, advocacy committee for the Florida League of Cities here on the Space Coast, so there were groups of people going up at different times during the legislative session. I got to see Representative Workman last week, I sat down with Senator Altman's legislative assistant, Rick Candest, and I visited Senator Charlie Dean's office, and he's a special guy, because Nick Abrams, who grew up in Satellite Beach, is his legislative assistant. So, I go to visit Nick, and Nick's doing a great job for Senator Dean, and he's also doing a good job for us up there as a representative, and a resident of Satellite Beach who grew up and went to the schools here locally and graduated from Satellite High School, so that's what my week was.
Thank you very much. I only have a couple of things. Tomorrow night, 20th of March, Councilman Montanaro will hold his town hall meeting here at the council chambers at 6:00 PM. Let everyone know. I attended the community leaders and local school officials meeting at Surfside Elementary School last week, and Wednesday, and I can tell you, community schools are critical, critically important, and the meeting was very, very interesting. Leave, Courtney, August is when you have arranged for Dr.
18th.
August 18th, for Dr. Bingley to come and give the presentation. And I would recommend everyone, if you have not heard the presentation, to please take some time, come to it, and I think you'll learn a lot about what's going on in the system. Also, I want to say, Surfside's just an amazing school. Walking the halls was interesting, and I went there. However old it is, is how long ago I went, because I was in the first year there when it opened. But the school is beautiful, they've done incredible amount of work there, great place. So, that's all I have to say. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, City Attorney's Report.
I have nothing.
Okay, moving on to Item Number Six, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the city has a new farmer's market, I don't know if any of you were able to go out to our first, one that started on March 13th at Pelican Beach Park. This will be there every Thursday from 3:00 PM until dusk, and apparently, our first one was so successful that they had, they were so busy the first hour, they were having a hard time unloading their truck, because they were so busy serving customers. So, we will be continuing to add additional things to that farmer's market as it grows in popularity, and I did get a lot of comments from friends and family that were able to go, and they thought, they thought it was just wonderful that we had that opportunity in our city. On March 22nd, we'll be hosting the Sampson Island Open House. This is a exploration of the island's trails in hopes of seeing some of the abundant wildlife, and then they'll have a light picnic lunch. Basically, if you would like to go call our rec department and reserve your spot in the transportation, time scheduled will be between 9:30 and 2:00 PM. And then on March 29th, we'll be hosting our annual Big Truck Day, everybody loves that event, and that's where you're gonna see the dump trucks and cement trucks and garbage trucks. Our police chief is really excited about that event. They're, they're big kids, you know? That starts at 10, from 10 until 2, and that's at the DRS Community Center. We do have a switch with our redevelopment, community redevelopment advisory committee, will be going from their typical meeting, which is March 20th, they'll be moving to March 26th, so please don't forget that. If you show up at City Hall on March 20th, it won't be for naught, because Councilman Montanaro will be holding his town hall meeting, so you'll be able to, to see something city anyway. We do have, if you've noticed, some work being done at Pelican Beach Park, it's finished, we have the roof in place, and we also have the playground equipment in place. I have the, next council meeting, we were presenting formally, the presentation to the Employee of the Year Award, who is Commander Brad Hodge, the Volunteer of the Year Award, Cynthia Singedong, and then the, the part-time Employee of the Year, Sal or Sam Lorcella, Lorcella, I think. So, they, we cannot do that this evening, because most of the police department is over at their annual dinner tonight. That employee luncheon was very successful, I think all our employers are very happy right now. Also, we, I did also attend a lot of the things that the council attended, we, the Women's Club is, there is their 50th anniversary, as well as the Satellite Beach United Methodist Church is having their 50th anniversary, as well as the Boy Scouts, so 1964 is a busy year, but all of those organizations have, have had a huge impact on our community, so it was nice to go through all those celebrations this, this week. I think, aside from our action item, that is all the news I have, and in, under action items, I do have a letter from the mayor for your approval for the, regarding the first responder funds. This letter will be sent along with the first responder resolution that you approved at the last council meeting, so if you find this letter sufficient, we just need your approval, and we'll have it ready for the mayor to sign tomorrow.
Concerning the action item, any discussion on it?
I think it's a good letter. Do you mean a motion? I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to Chairman Bowlin Lewis and the County Commission on the First Responder.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, a second by Councilman Breimer. At this time, since it's an action item, I'll open it up for public comment. Here are none, back to council. Any further comment from council? Here are none, Lenora?
Councilwoman Dean?
Yes.
Vice Senator Goff?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, five, nothing. Courtney, any further? Thank you. Okay, finally, moving on to Number Seven, recognition of Surfside Elementary School students and beautification board for their participation in the purchase and for the raising, raising their awareness of the Cassia Boulevard Dogway Stations. Great.
Good evening, good evening. This is one of those opportunities where I get to talk about the cooperation, and a great segue for me into the, the Surfside Elementary folks and cooperation that we get through the school and through the various boards, like the Women's Club, you know, and so, in Brevard County, but just participation, the local community always come, seems to come together when we need them, and this is no exception. The Satellite Beach has always been a, a forerunner in the, the, I'm saying, I'm losing my mind here, but we've always been out there when it comes to stormwater and the cleanliness of the lagoon. The lagoon right now is a hot topic, well, it's been a hot topic in Satellite Beach for the last 20 years. We've been working on the cleanliness of the lagoon and trying to do different things to ensure what we put into the water and, and into the lagoon is, is treated as best we can treat it before it becomes toxic in the lagoon. And, and one of those projects was our Cassia Project. The Cassia Project turned out to be one of those really important projects, because it did, did a number of things. One, it, it helped us with our, in our endeavor to clean the lagoon, and the other is that it took a very important pathway to Surfside Elementary and made it much safer. I, you know, every morning when I go out and do my tour around town, I notice the kids going to school, and there are more and more kids utilizing that, that bike path, because it's off the road, it's safer, and, and, you know, folks really like to use it. In the evening, I see folks walking, they're out there using it all the time, and it's, it's just been a great addition to, to the city and, and great for safety, and it also serves a purpose that it was intended to in cleaning the water before it goes out to the lagoon. One of the issues that we did have, though, was when people walk, they like to walk their dogs, and when they walk their dogs, their dogs go to the bathroom, while some folks clean up after their, their dogs, and some folks don't. Well, the beautification board identified this as, as a problem, because they were hearing things, and we were hearing things, because my guys go out there and mow all the time, and that's not, it's not a great thing when you start running over, you know, well, I'll leave that imagination. So, I was approached by Judy Kramer, the, the chairperson of the beautification board, about putting some dog way stations out there, and I thought, hey, that's a great idea, and we threw some different ideas around, because money's tight, and we didn't know whether we were gonna be able to afford to buy them, because they are pretty expensive, or we could build them ourselves and come up, you know, with maybe donations from Publix, we get old bags from Publix, and we threw a bunch of different ideas out there, and finally, we came up with the idea, well, you know what, we'll just buy them, and the beautification board decided that they were gonna buy them. So, for that, we're very grateful that the beautification board went ahead and purchased the, the dogs' way stations. But for, they still weren't being used like we thought they would, so Judy took a step further, and she worked with Patty Tyzen, who was the art teacher at the Surfside Elementary, and she, and her and her fourth grade class, art students, developed posters to raise the awareness of what those stations were for, and I am here to tell you that it made a difference. Folks were really paying attention to those signs, I've got emails, I got calls, you know, I would be stopped in, in Publix, you know, whenever you go to Publix, if you're, you work for the city, you go to Publix, you do run into people, and I would stop in Publix a number of times, saying, wow, that's what a great idea. I was in a meeting with Vera, a person that works at the zoo, she, her kids go to the school, oh, yeah, man, what a great idea, that was great. So, that is the sense of cooperation that is in this community, and it's, it's so good to see. And so, we wanted to recognize everybody for their effort in, in this, in this project, because it is making a difference. We're cleaning the lagoon, we're keeping the, you know, Cassia Boulevard is beautiful, the way we designed it to be is being utilized the way that we thought it was going to be, you know, and our engineer, David King, he's kind of the brainchild behind the filling in of the ditch, so if you didn't like the ditch, or if you did like the ditch, well, you know, I'll, I'll tell you the guy to blame, I would point to him, but, but actually, I think it's a I would point to him, but actually, I think it's a great addition to the city, and it makes things a lot safer for the kids going back and forth to school. So with that, I'd like to introduce Judy Kramer. And Patty Tyzen.
On our beautification board, I think our senior member is, who's there? The senior member is Ken Row. We were very fortunate, and we got, you know, we kicked around a lot of ideas, as Alan said, and we came up with, I think, what was, you know, worked out to be a really great idea. And so then I went to Patty, and she got her fourth grade together, and I'll let you introduce your kids.
Okay, well, there is over 50 something fourth graders, but we have a representative group tonight, so I'd like all the fourth graders to come out. We also have Lisa Markin, our assistant. She's a fourth grade teacher, she was a big help. So would you guys like to say your names for everybody? Would you like to say your names?
You start.
My name is Nino.
Sarah.
Lila.
Cameron.
Taylor.
Ethan.
Zane.
Max.
It was a great activity for the kids. They go to the Indian River Lagoon, and this year, they weren't able to get in the water, correct? And so it was, it was a great project for them, so they realized that they have an impact on the people in our community just by, through their artwork, through what they communicate, and everybody, each individual can make a difference.
Right, no matter how, excuse me, no matter how young you are, don't ever think that you won't be heard, because you were heard out there.
Mayor, would you like to?
I have a question for everyone. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate it, and, you know, the signs are out there kind of disappeared, and I don't know why, but if you ever get the feeling like you need to make some more art and do some more things out there, we're, we'll take them gladly. So if you ever feel like doing some more signs, or the next class that comes through, if they feel like doing more signs, they're always welcome out there because they do help and they raise the awareness of why the stations are there, and, you know, a lot of folks think that dog poop is fertilizer, and it's really not. It's really not, so, you know, you're helping the lagoon, and you're helping the city, and you're helping my guys who have to mow that area. So thank you very much, I appreciate it, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. It was a great project. Great project. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to agenda item number eight, discuss, take action on ordinance number 1089. Jim?
Ordinance number 1089, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 58-156 Satellite Beach City Code, renaming the utilities tax fund to capital assets fund, and providing general parameters governing disposition of funds, providing an effective date. It's a second reading of ordinance 1089.
Thank you.
Move to adopt ordinance 1089 on second reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Brymer. Discussion from council. Hearing none, open up for the public on agenda item eight, excuse me, ordinance 1089. Hearing none, close comment portion, back to council. Council, any further comment? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deen?
Yes, motion carries, five nothing. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number nine, discuss, take action on ordinance number 1090. Jim?
Ordinance number 1090, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 12.01, job classification to change job class title from building official to building official slash CRA administrator of the city of Satellite Beach personnel policy, providing an effective date. It's a second reading of ordinance number 1090.
Thank you.
Move to adopt ordinance 1090 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Brymer. Discussion from council. Hearing none, open up to public comment on ordinance number 1090, agenda item nine.
Good evening, council. Ron Girgudis, resident Satellite Beach. I just want to put on the record that this ordinance has no conflict of interest between the CRA and the city and the related rules with chapter 163, and I'm not looking for an answer. That's all I question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comment on agenda item number nine?
Excuse me. Dale Angerbens, resident. This $4,721, is that include benefits? And then the next question is, what happens if we decide at somewhere down the road to dissolve the CRA? What kind of impact is that going to have? We have a CRA director, which happens to be our city manager, which I still question there's a conflict of interest there, and I'd like that to be on the record. Does she get paid to be the CRA director and for the work that she does as a CRA director additionally to her salary that she's currently getting as a city manager? So this $4,721.60, is that annually? That's my question, because I know that there was a number that came out the other night of $23,000 plus, and I'm not quite sure what that is. You know, and the question also is, is that what happens if, and I'm going to be real positive here, the CRA just goes great guns. Let's just say we have all kinds of development that come in, and we got a lot of stuff going on, okay? You know, what happens if John Stone can't accommodate that along with the building department? You know, are you looking at additional assistance as far as that's concerned going forward? You know, and, you know, that's definitely something to think about. We're, you know, if it's hugely successful, or if we end the CRA, I know we can't end the CRA because we have debt, but if we get rid of the debt, we could end the CRA. So then what happens to this, this position? And does, if it does go away, does that money that John Stone is getting disappear? Under the circumstances?
Okay, who do I start? This $4,721.60 is just the salary increase to Mr. Stone's base pay for the year, so that's an annual salary increase. The city manager, myself, I do not get paid anything additional than the contract of being a city manager that you all approved and signed. However, the CRA, since I am the CRA executive director, we could do that. You could, you could pay a portion of my salary, you know, could be paid from the CRA. We are not doing that now, but we are doing that with John Stone's salary. At the last CRA board meeting, you looked at his hours that he did, that he clocked for a 30-day period. We made an estimate that he spends 20% of his time on CRA matters, so we are taking 20% of his salary from the CRA. The CRA is paying 20% of his salary, so that was what that $20,000 and so on was that you saw at the last CRA meeting. If Mr. Stone got too busy to do all of the things he's doing now, which is, he's almost there, we would usually hire someone underneath him, you know, additional building inspector or maybe a, you know, a planner or something like that, that would be paid less to absorb some of those duties. So that would save us from, I wouldn't hire, you know, a CRA director because that, we already have somebody managing the CRA, and that would be an unnecessary management position. So we would usually hire someone on a lower level to fill in those needs. That saves the city money. So we used to, we used to spend $85,000 a year on a CRA director. The CRA now is spending $20,000 a year for the administration of the CRA. So it's saving the CRA money, and it's saving the city money because we don't have more employees than we need. I think that's it.
And also, from the CRA standpoint, the CRA lasts until 20, is it 2025?
Correct. And if the, say the city decided to dissolve the CRA, then we would eliminate the CRA administrator from his position, and then he would, his salary would be reduced to what he made before because he's not doing those duties anymore. I mean, it's pretty simple like that.
Okay, thank you. Further public comments? Hearing, hearing none, back to council. Council comments?
What about the conflict of interest question?
Many cities, because CRAs sometimes don't, you don't need a full employee to manage the CRA. So many cities have their city manager as the executive director, and I would say the majority of cities I am aware of do that. It's very rare that they don't, because usually, when, that kind of puts a separation that council has no control over, so it's very rare that that occurs. So you, and I think pretty much every other CRA, every city CRA in Brevard County, the city manager sits as the executive director. And then you, usually you'll have a position under that that manages the CRA, and it's usually under a department, like the planning department. And the cities will take percentages of what people spend of their time and take that from the CRA, and that's called a cost allocation. So some cities, like where I used to work at Titusville, did a whole cost allocation study, and that actually applied to all of their funds, like stormwater utility, their utility building fund, you know, water, sewer, solid waste, marina. And that is, what that does is, it basically, what we're doing, what we did with the CRA is you estimate how much time the person's working on that fund, or the CRA fund, and take that percentage of their salary out of the CRA fund. So that's how most cities do that, so there's no conflict of interest. If there is, then perhaps the state or three quarters of the state of Florida is in big trouble.
So why did you not just change the pay grade and not change the title and just allocate the portion of funds from the CRA for the interloper agreement?
I didn't think this needed a pay grade change.
Sure, okay.
I mean, the duties are in line with managing a CRA, it's in line with managing the building department.
Further comments or questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1090 on second reading.
You seconded it. Vice Mayor Gott.
Hi, Mark.
I already did that. It's been a long day.
For any, any further comments from council? Hearing none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Deen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goff?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deen?
Yes, motion carries, five nothing. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 10, discuss, take action on city engineering contract with Quentin L. Hampton and Associates.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 3rd, city council accepted the request for proposal selection committee's recommendation for Quentin L. Hampton Associates, Inc. for providing professional engineering services on a continuing contract basis. We are recommending a contract term for five years with mutually agreed upon provisions for one-year consecutive extensions. Provided for your approval is the contract included in your packet, and I believe, I've already spoken with Councilman Gott, and she's got a couple changes, so we might want to invite our city engineer, David King, up to the podium, make sure he doesn't disagree with any of the changes. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Comments from council?
There were some things in here that didn't make sense, and I didn't go into any of the punctuation and stuff there. I'll start on page two, the very last line on page two. Responsible for determination of whether or any extension, take the word "or" out. For the determination of whether any extension. Then go to page three, under 4D Delta. The second line talks about the Controller General of the United States or the state of Florida or the county of Brevard. The state of, neither the state of Florida nor Brevard County have a Controller General, so that sentence should be changed to the Controller General of the United States or the Chief Financial Officer of the state of Florida or the county of Brevard. On page four, under F2, the last entry is, I think it's saying equal to or more than $5 million. It should just be greater than $5 million because you've already covered the $5 million number in the entry above that for 4.9%. So, and then the same thing in number three, that should just be greater than $5 million. Page six, the very last line, this is a minor one, but it says sole discretion to enter into the contracts with other engineers. It should be enter into contracts, delete the. On page nine, first paragraph, 1, 2, 3, fourth line down, it says professional liability insurances, that should be singular, not plural, insurance. On page 10, under subparagraph 4, 1A, the second line, or any material change in coverages or limits, coverages should be plural, not possessive, take the apostrophe out of there. On page 11, at the second, at the very top on the beginning of the second line, it says commercial general liability insurance, and every place else in this contract, it's talked about comprehensive general liability insurance. Commercial needs to be changed to comprehensive. Under, on the same page, under 16C, the second line, contract, frankly, I didn't understand what that sentence was saying, but I think, I think it's...
Comprehensive?
Yes.
I think it's supposed to be saying, the city shall have the right to reuse the data, documents, and maps and contract with parties other than the engineer.
Is that what you understand, David? Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yes, that's what I thought, it allows you to utilize what we prepare for your own uses with others.
Right. Can you talk into that thing, please?
David King, Quentin Hampton and Associates, yes, that's, that reuse of documents section is to allow the product that you've paid for, that we produced, for you to go forth and utilize that with others. But the way you reworded it is clear, clear in my mind.
Yeah, so contract with parties other than the engineer. And then under paragraph D, and the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth line down, it begins with clerk of the works. And I asked the city manager if she could track down any human being who could possibly tell me what clerk of the works is, and she found out that it refers to an onsite manager. So we're going to change that to say shall require that an onsite manager be employed and... and strike clerk of the works.
See, I learned something right, too.
On page 12, equal employment, opportunity employment, talking about nondiscrimination, we have been adding sexual orientation as to, as one of the categories that will not be discriminated against. So that would be added to 18. And then at the top of page 13, the very top, the third line, religion, sex, you left out the category of age, this is another nondiscrimination clause. So you need to add there age and sexual orientation or national origin. And then in paragraph 23, assignment, the last sentence there says, however, this agreement shall run to the Satellite Beach City Government. And I have no idea what that means.
I think it says with, it should say with instead of to.
Do you know what it means? Do you know what it means?
I know this is the contract that we've had in place for nine years, so
I know, but I wasn't on council.
Agreed. That wasn't a beard of thinned water said at that time either.
What it's supposed to be saying is that the contract is assigned to us and the engineer. So it should be saying, however, this agreement shall run with the City of Satellite Beach Government and its successors. But to me, that's what the point of the clause is.
And that doesn't even make sense.
I think even without that sentence, without that last sentence altogether, the assignment clause makes
Yeah, you could take out the sentence.
Okay, strike that, however, that last sentence. Other than that, I can live with it.
And nine years ago, actually, we were, we were asked to execute a contract, I think it was a, for the most part, was the same contract that the previous city engineer. So some of these corrections are corrections to something that's been around for a while, but they all make sense and we have no problem with those corrections.
Well, actually, if I were drafting this thing, it would be about seven pages long, not 15, and there'd be a lot of corrections to punctuation and whatnot, but
It's hard for her to turn the other
I can't hear you.
I said Quentin Hampton wasn't, wasn't the engineer when you were on council. It was outlawed.
We're still under council comments, so
I'd like to make a motion to
Have a comment.
Okay.
Approve the engineering contract with Quentin L. Hampton with the changes noted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott. This time, we're still under council comments.
Just on the page 11 with the comprehensive versus commercial, I think, probably maybe a question for David, I think you do have to have commercial general liability insurance, not comprehensive, am I correct?
Elsewhere, elsewhere in the document, it does list that the various types of insurance.
So I'm just wondering if it needs to be commercial, not comprehensive throughout the document.
On page nine, it kind of defines what comprehensive general liability insurance, last line and second paragraph, and it lists the various types of policies, insurance, and coverage amounts.
Okay.
So I think that kind of defines that term for the rest of it.
Further comments from council? Carol, do you have any further?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Roger Goodis, resident Satellite Beach. I see this contract, and contracts have a lot of issues. I had no pointed question from city council to our city's attorney to ensure the best of the worlds for the city, to ensure that this contract is correct. And on the other side of the equation, I see a respectable engineer who is agreeing with things that perhaps should go through an attorney to ensure that his company is kept solid. And I hear all these changes going on here. They may not be a big deal right now, but they could lead to potential issues. And I ask that the council re-review this before passing this to ensure that all parties are left hold. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments still open. Here are none. Bring it back to council. I have a motion. Any further discussion?
Did legal review the contract?
Jim Beetle, or Attorney Beetle, went through Quentin Hampton's attorneys as well as their insurance company, so.
Any further comment from council? This agenda item? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Devene?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries five nothing. Moving on to agenda item number 11, discuss take action on disposition of vehicle, 2004 Ford Corona Victoria.
Good evening. This is pretty basic. The 2004 Crown Vic, which was the old COP car after it was a patrol vehicle, has met, is ready to meet its maker. It is in really bad shape. It's not worth fixing anymore. The bottom is totally, well, not totally rusted out, but unsafe to drive because of the rust condition on the bottom of the vehicle. We called around to see what the best price we could get for the vehicle. LKQ was willing to give us $600. There was A&amp;M Auto that wanted to give us 400, and one, one company wasn't even interested in buying the vehicle. So $600 is the best we could do. We've basically cannibalized the vehicle to get anything that we can salvage for the remaining Crown Vics that we have. And 2004, I'm not exactly sure of the mileage, but I think it's about 160, 165 on the vehicle itself. So it's, it's had a good, long life and it's ready to, ready to go to a better place.
Okay, thank you. Council comments?
Move to approve the sale of vehicle of '27 to LKQ Auto Salvage for $600.
Motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Questions from council?
I just want to clarify something. You know, you say these vehicles have 160,000 miles. The miles aren't what kill these vehicles, it's the hours they run, too. So, I mean, you know, we need to be cognizant of the fact that these police cars have been running.
Absolutely.
Not just driving. So, I mean, they, they lead to the demise of them.
Well, you could easily add, you know, 25 to 30% more miles on, or miles onto the engine because of the running time.
At this time, I'll open up to public comment on agenda item 11.
Dale Abrams, citizen. Alan, do we have any more of these vehicles? Is this the end of the lot to go?
We always have them, I think, as they come up.
Because last year, you got rid of two.
You directed to here?
Yeah, last year, there was two that were, that were removed because they were, they were old and they needed to be removed. So are there any additional ones going forward? Because I know we're getting new vehicles.
I'm sure there's, this is an ongoing deal. Every few years, a car or something comes up, a piece of equipment that has met its light.
What would be the next vehicle that would be put on?
Alan, do you have an idea on that or just?
There's, we still have some Crown Vics left. And to be quite honest with you, back when we were rotating vehicles on a regular basis, we were able to actually auction the vehicles in a silent auction manner when they were worth something, and we would get a better price for them. Now we're running these cars into the ground and we can't get anything for them because they're falling apart inside and out. So once we get to a point where we can start rotating vehicles when they have only 100,000 miles on them or something like that, they've used, they've used their useful life as police vehicles, but somebody can pick them up for a taxi cab or something like that, and there, we get more for them as far as sale value. So, you know, yes, there are more vehicles to go, to answer your question, but those vehicles are in the same shape as this or will be by the time we retire them.
Can you give me a number?
Probably three right now that I can, right off the top of my head, there's probably three Crown Vics left.
Okay. And the other thing is, what do you do with the money that you make off of this?
Talk to the boss.
Which?
The city's general fund, not, you don't have a general fund, do you?
It goes in the city's general fund.
Of course not. It goes into the city's general fund.
Thank you. Any further comment on this agenda item? Here are none. Back to council.
I have one question. You said back when, we used to rotate vehicles.
Well, actually, before
What timeframe? Just curious, because
Before we, we increased, they increased police vehicles, police officers, probably around 2004, 2005. And the economy was a little bit better, so you had less, less police officers and more vehicles. So, you know, so it was actually like a, it was able to, you were able to turn them over a little bit better.
So we were kind of on this continuous rotation program
Exactly. We're buying two vehicles a year.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, right. So.
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
Yeah.
Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Devene?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes, motion carries five nothing. Moving on to agenda item 12, city council proposed, proposes for next meeting on April 2nd.
We have a light agenda planned for you on April 2nd. We're going to be giving you a demonstration of the RMS system. You'll be approving, hopefully, a resolution that will authorize our lease for the purchase of fire truck, and we will be presenting the employee of the year awards.
I would like to see, because we've talked about this before, the board attendance issue brought up, and look at the attendance and, and it's been an ongoing issue with forums at boards, and I know we've, you guys have talked about it, I've talked about it, I think we've even discussed it, but we really need to take a look at the boards and see what the attendance is, or, you know, see who is really interested in being on these boards, and if not, try to find some replacements that are interested.
I've actually contacted all the board members that we spoke of last time, and they all said they were interested in serving.
On all, every single board?
The boards that we talked about last time, and you asked me to contact them to see if they were still interested in serving, I did contact those individuals and they were, or actually, I didn't, I'm sorry, our city clerk did, and they were, they were interested in serving.
I'd like just, also just to make sure that we have some continuity on how the boards are set up, and also when you do miss meetings, how many is too many? I mean, I think it's worth a discussion at some point because we have to function. And if we're going into SNAP, we've got to make sure our boards are, are functioning, are functioning. And I looked at the list, and they're pretty solid now, and I looked at people missing, it's kind of random for the people that are left on the boards, but I still think we need to take a look at it at some point and get something there.
Maybe, yeah, I mean, maybe it's, again, it's not the person that's come up, maybe a policy and procedure on attendance so that people understand the responsibility as a board member. Not sure how we handle it, but I know it's an issue, and I know it's been brought up several times, and it's just been an agenda item. Since it's a light agenda, maybe we can
There's, there's two ways to do it. You could put it in their bylaws, or you could make it an ordinance, so.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm willing to do it either or at this point until at least we have a discussion or chop something out. I think boards might be important enough that this might be a workshop type, and we go over more things on boards than just attendance. You know, maybe, I, I just think with SNAP coming up, and we're going through all this work to make it easier for people through the process, that we've got to make sure them positions are filled and they have the meetings, so.
You say you're requesting a workshop?
Well, no, I, we need to discuss it. I think even if it's a short discussion, we still need to bring it up at some point as a council.
So, would you like that as an agenda item on your next meeting? Because it's pretty light agenda.
Well, you've got appointments to boards.
Yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, how many is too many? And when does it not become functional? And if we're going to have the SNAP work, we got to make sure boards in general function correctly, that people are showing up. If they're not and they can't make it, then we need to know what that threshold is. That's all I'm saying.
I think that the starting point is for the city, maybe even to send a letter to all board members and let them know that we are putting an emphasis on regular attendance. I would imagine that some of these board members aren't even aware that it's not okay to continually miss meetings. And so if we put everybody on notice that, that this is important and that their service on boards will be evaluated in part by their attendance, I think that's a good place to start.
I think it needs to be an agenda item to discuss. I don't want to discuss it now, we're just trying to set an agenda, so.
Can I ask?
I think we need to talk about it a little, because we've got some things going forward that we want to make sure work right. I mean, doesn't, we can do that as part of the next meeting and, you know, use that as one of the steps, send the letters. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Any further items that need to be on? Please discuss it with Quentin. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 13, appointments to boards.
A move that we rescind the appointment of Andy Stewart as a member of the auditor selection committee and appoint Bill Meyer to the auditor selection committee.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro.
I'd like to clarify that. So we're taking him off as a voting member, but he's still
No, look at your language down here. The, the guidelines are managerial responsibility fall within discover the audit should serve as a member of the audit committee, not just a voting member, he's not, he can't be a member, so that's why my motion was to remove him.
But, but
He'll be a staff liaison.
He'll be a staff liaison, yeah.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Questions from council?
No.
Okay. Lenore?
In other words, Andy, you're fired.
No, not totally.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Devene?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Nothing, thank you. Moving on to agenda item 14, adoption of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes submitted.
Motion by Vice Mayor Gott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brymer to adopt the minutes of February 19th, 26th, and the 5th, the workshops. Any questions? Comments from council? Here are none. Lenore?
Councilman Devene?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Any further business before council? Here are none. Meeting's adjourned.